This is, it says PDX eight and that's the name of the Amazon where it comes here.
Well, wonderful.
I had to Google it. I rarely find you about that much.
How are you?
Good, I haven't seen everyone in a long time. It says the barbecue. I know. It's been awhile. He's still here, yeah.
Are you collecting up Hawaii tonight?
I heard it's gonna miss.
Is it?
Yeah. We'll see, a little bit of rain.
Oh, good.
It'll survive.
Good.
No, I wish I was there, still.
Great.
Yep.
Good evening. It is seven o'clock and I will call our September eighth meeting for the City Council together and we'll lead with the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Bravo?
Here.
Counselor Wilk?
Here.
Counselor Cantu?
Here.
Counselor Shaw?
Here.
Counselor Cornwell?
Here.
Counselor Grikalva?
Butisin.
And Mayor Lonergan?
Here. Thank you. Appreciate everybody being here tonight. I do not have any announcements. I, we have a couple appointments. First one is Marsha Merrifield through the Recreation of Park Board and are you present, Marsha? I talked to you the, a couple days ago and she was excited, very much involved in Woodburn Soccer and excited to be part of the future of Woodburn. Her application is sent out. Do you have any questions? Would I entertain a motion to accept her to the park board?
I move to accept her to the park board, please.
Clear second.
Second.
All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion passes. Welcome aboard, Marsha. Thank you so much for willing to serve. Second one is, is also a good one. We have Isis Rolles who is a student, a junior at the Woodburn High School who has volunteered to be on the library board and Isis is here. Please stand and say hi. Also, her application was sent out to the council. Any questions, concerns?
No, I just wanted to say I'm so pleased to have a junior in high school signing up for a volunteer position. Thank you.
You are the future.
Yes.
Thank you so much for being part of us. Greatly appreciated. So, would I entertain a motion?
I move to appoint Isis to the Woodburn Library Board.
Second?
Moving second, all in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, welcome aboard. So next up, before I go to our proclamation, I want to, I do have a reflection. It's been a month since we, we met last and since then, we had a little thing called our Fiesta Mexicana and I'd like to, let's talk about it a little bit. It was a huge success. I was, was honored to ride on a, on a float with Representative Salinas and a couple members of our court, our queen and they were, were fantastic. Representative Salinas thought it was a fantastic parade and I, I talked to our grand marshal, Raina Lopez, after that and she was very excited and very proud to be a, a member and a participant of Woodburn and being in that position to represent Woodburn in the parade. And I want to thank the chief and your, all the people here that worked on that parade. There was a lot of guidance and making sure we went down the right streets, so thank you for that. It was a very good weekend and Jim, you want to talk a little bit about?
Yeah, certainly.
Before you get on, I need to say I, I heard a few things about some of the counselors in the, their parade that a couple people got hit with candy. I don't know if an ambulance was called, but was there something we need to share with?
My first parade ever.
Comments? Good time though, wasn't it?
It was great. It was, it was a great time, good to see so many people turn out for the parade, for the Fiesta and always good to see the Latino community out demonstrating culture and just great turnout. It was a good time.
It was long and, and else?
Oh, yeah. Of course, I got to ride in the parade and you know I wouldn't hit anybody. But anyway, it's so exciting to see the children coming up and they're just begging for candy and the adults that are right there, come on. And anyway, just having our representatives like Salinas and Moon Rose and who else was there? I think that, anyway, those people, I mean, they're our representatives and they care about Woodburn and I also want to give a shout out to our wonderful police department. They were right there and I tossed a couple candies to them as well. They're going, no, no, yeah, yeah. So, anyway, thank you.
I want to especially give a big shout out to Jesse because he was right there directing traffic at the beginning. I didn't ride in the parade because I wanted candy, but I, they skipped right past me because I was at the very beginning, but Jesse was there directing and there was no hitches at the beginning. It was wonderful.
Yeah.
He was working very, very hard.
I agree. Yeah, the city staff did a fantastic job putting that together and obviously it wasn't just the parade, the Fiesta, it's a big part of it, but it was the whole weekend.
Yes.
At, at Legion, the, the music, the food, the, the games, the soccer tournament, it was. It was a great Woodburn event that set a lot for, for us and our position in the state. So, Jim now?
Yeah, no, I think you really covered a lot of it. It was a fantastic year. It was successful. You know, we had some, we were a little concerned about how things were going to go this year and a lot of events of that nature have been canceled across the state and we really just didn't think that was the right message to be sending to our community, so we went all in and investing in the Fiesta this year and I think the response from the community really told us that that was the right decision to make. You've thanked a lot of the people that were involved. It's, it's always a risky venture to start thanking individual people at the risk of missing some others. I'm, you know, I want to mention Maricela, Yanira, you mentioned the police department, they had a massive presence at the event, which is, pardon?
And the fire department.
And the fire department, yep, yep. And then not only that, but we have a lot of our volunteer, of our finance department staff that are there too because there's a lot of work that we need their support with tons and tons of volunteers. You know, the city took this event over because it was kind of falling apart in 2010. Worked with the chamber for about four years, they were the lead organizer, they weren't able to continue with it. We took it back in 2015 and it's continued to get just better and better and I want to give a lot of credit to Jesse and his staff for making the event what it is today. So despite, you know, some of the concerns and trepidations we had about how well is it going to go, the, the weather on Friday was a little bit iffy, but even with that, we had the second highest attendance total at the event ever.
Fantastic, way to go.
With like twenty-five thousand, six hundred approximately in attendance. That doesn't even count the parade attendance and there are, it's probably at least ten, fifteen thousand people either participating in the parade or watching the parade. So, a lot of people in the community really get involved in the event and it was, was a great one this year. Couple other statistics, we had more than seventy soccer teams that participated in the tournament and you don't see all of those because they don't all play at the event at Legion Park because the tournament starts long before and so there are qualifier games that take place over the course of many weeks, both at Legion and at Centennial Park and by the time it gets to Fiesta event weekend, we're dealing with semifinals and, and finals. And so tremendous participation in the soccer tournament. And one of the newer things that we've been doing for a few years is the pickleball tournament now that we have really nice pickleball facilities there, so we had more than forty teams that participated in the pickleball tournament.
I heard a lot of compliments on the, on the, on the pickleball, on the courts.
Yeah.
Very impressed with them.
They are really nice courts.
They are.
So, great year, another one in the books and we're already looking forward to next year. Just to kind of put it out there, one of the challenges that we're going to be facing now that we're moving forward with the Aquatic Center renovation project to build a new community center, we do all of our staging, most of our staging for the parade takes place at that site and it's not going to be available and so we're going to have to reconfigure how we do the staging and the launch of the parade and we're going to really lean heavily into a pre-registration requirement. So we're going to have to reach out to a lot of the typical parade participants well in advance of the event so that we get early registrations, know who we have coming and where we're going, you know, we can give them information on how we're going to stage and kick things off. So, it's going to be a challenging one for us next year, kind of like it was when First Street was under construction, maybe even to a greater degree, but we had to modify some things to make the parade work that year as well. So, stay tuned.
All right. So yeah, when you think about over twenty-five thousand people really without, the only incidents that I heard were a couple injuries from the soccer tournament, but nothing in, in the Fiesta. Chief, do you have anything to add to that?
It went very well. It was very well attended, as I see everybody out. I don't think of anybody with candy.
You're a better shot than some of us.
Jesse did an excellent job.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, I have a proclamation that I will read from September fifteenth through October fifteenth. We're going to celebrate Hispanic, Latino and Indigenous Heritage Month. So whereas people who identify themselves as Hispanic, Latino, Indigenous from Mexico or from Mexico, Spain, the Caribbean, South and Central America have contributed to Woodburn's history, culture, prosperity and successes since the eighteen eighties. And whereas Woodburn honors the rich and diverse cultural heritages and historical legacies of those whose families have been here for generations and some of the newest members of, of our community. And whereas Woodburn's Hispanic, Latino and Indigenous communities now constitute sixty-two percent of our population, including our leaders, policymakers, educators, students, healthcare professionals, agricultural workers, military, public safety, industrial, trades, business and organizational leaders and entrepreneurs who are actively involved in our community and in mentoring, mentoring our next generation. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month has been nationally recognized as September fifteenth through October fifteenth, and whereas the City of Woodburn acknowledges and honors the diverse cultures and histories of Hispanic, Latino and Indigenous heritages in our community and throughout Oregon. And whereas the City of Woodburn is dedicated to working together to address the ongoing challenges faced by the Hispanic, Latino and Indigenous Oregonians in achieving equity and access to opportunities for prosperity. Now therefore, I Frank J. Lonergan, Mayor of the City of Woodburn hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five to be Hispanic, Latino and Indigenous Heritage Month in the City of Woodburn and encourage all to join in this observance and participate in the events that celebrate the rich history and culture. And there actually will be an event down at the Plaza on Saturday afternoon. I know the Mexican consulate will be coming to town and there'll be music and again some, some food and, and dancing down at the, at the Plaza Friday afternoon, Saturday afternoon the twelfth.
It's Friday.
So, moving on comes another fun part of our meeting. We have some presentations from the Woodburn Police Department and a promotion ceremony.
My name is Jason Milken, I'm the chief of police here for the Woodburn Police Department and as the mayor said, pretty cool tonight. We get to promote two people in our organization. I can't tell you how crazy it's been for the last couple of years and how much change we have gone through, how much change we're going to continue to do, we're still continuing to grow, we're still trying to hire more people. In fact, we're in the process of hiring seven more officers right now. It's hard for me to keep up with their names. I, I just, you know, if I see somebody, hey, you, so it's a, I'm working on it. So, I'm, I'm very excited, we're going to be promoting Adam Stewart to lieutenant tonight and Nick Wilson to sergeant and with, without further ado, I'm going to have Adam Stewart come forward.
I state your name.
I, Adam Stewart.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Woodburn.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Woodburn.
And the rules and regulations of the Woodburn Police Department.
And the rules and regulations of the Woodburn Police Department.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of lieutenant.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of lieutenant.
To which I have been appointed in and for the City of Woodburn Police Department.
Which I have been appointed in and for the City of Woodburn Police Department.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
According to law and the best of my ability.
And I'm going to guess your wife is going to do the badge for it. So we always do a badge pinning, it's very important that we do that. It's the one time she gets a stab in legally. Okay, then if I could ask Nick Wilson to come forward. Nick's going to be promoted to sergeant. And he's hitting to his daughter to make sure and record it. It's all recorded in here also. Okay. All right, you ready? Will you raise your right hand?
I state your name.
I, Nick Wilson.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Woodburn.
The laws and ordinances of the City of Woodburn.
And the rules and regulations of the Woodburn Police Department.
And the rules and regulations of the Woodburn Police Department.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police sergeant.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police sergeant.
To which I have been appointed in and for the City of Woodburn Police Department.
To which I have been appointed in and for the City of Woodburn Police Department.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
And I'm going to assume his wife, Brenna, has come up in the badge. Yes, all right. Just make it sure. Again, like I said, there's a, a lot of changes in our department and it's, it's unusual to change so many hands, especially at the command staff level. So it's pretty exciting for me, it's exciting for us. I'm looking forward to what we're going to continue to do for our community and for our, for our, for our PD. Again, like I said, it's just changing so fast, it's, it's actually hard to keep up sometimes. They certainly, I, I earn my money pretty much every day, so they, they make sure of it, so. With that being said, if it's all right with all of you, we're going to break for a few minutes, we're going to have cake and refreshments out in the hallway and Mayor, is that right? About fifteen minutes or so?
Right, about fifteen minutes.
Okay. All right, thank you all for coming, I appreciate it.
So where are you been?
Well, I feel like when we're on the big island, like, we're always having to drive to...
Move on to communications, and I do not have any. Next up is business from the public. This allows anyone in public that wants to accept them, that is not already on the agenda, to come on up, and we'd limit it to three minutes. We'd love to hear from you. And I do not see anyone from the public who has any cards for anyone rushing up. So we will move on to the consent agenda. Items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and may be adopted by one motion. Any item may be removed for discussion at the request of a council member. May we please have our assistant backup city recorder read what's on the consent agenda, please?
The items on the consent agenda are as follows. Woodburn City Council minutes of August 11th, 2025. Woodburn City Council executive session minutes of August 11th, 2025. Liquor license application, Floris Mini Market LLC. Traffic enforcement report, May through July, 2025. Utility assistance program funding. IGA with the City of Mount Angel. New development activity, August 2025.
Thank you. Does anyone care to pull up anything on the consent agenda? Then I entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is a second?
Second.
Moved to the second. All in favor, signify with an aye.
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 Opposed? The same? Thank you. Motion passes. We do not have any table business. Do not have any public hearings tonight. So move on to general business. First one is our council bill 3287. Council bill 3287 is...
Excuse me. An ordinance adopting amendments to the Woodburn Development Ordinance related to floodplain protections.
Thank you. Council bill 3287 has been duly introduced. Beating ordinance requires two readings. May we please have the first reading by title only if there's no objection?
Council bill number 3287, an ordinance adopting amendments to the Woodburn Development Ordinance related to floodplain protections, LA 25-01.
Thank you. May we please have the second reading?
Council bill number 3287, an ordinance adopting amendments to the Woodburn Development Ordinance related to floodplain protections, LA 25-01.
Thank you. Do we have a staff report? This is something we've talked about and had a public hearing in the past a couple times, and...
We have. I'm Chris Kerr, community development director. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. But essentially, as you said, we've discussed it. What you're seeing is an ordinance that essentially implements the discussions that you had and the recommendations that you had based on the public hearing that we had back on July 14th. The WDO amendments are pretty simple. They're what we had called that permit-by-permit process. So we've now adopted, this will be an adoption into RWDO definition for a qualified, what's the phrase? Qualified professional, I think is the phrase we put in there, qualified professional, as well as some short, simple language related to coming up with meeting the buyout requirements from the state, so that this habitat assessment will be done.
Right.
We looked at this as sort of the best of several evils, kind of best we could do. Bit unfortunate. We were hoping this would go away with the lawsuit. That's the reason we kind of delayed this out a little bit. That didn't happen. So here we are, and we'll adopt it, and just as one minor piece is, there's a, these are actually interim measures that FEMA is recommending to us, so I expect to be back in about 18 months with modified measures that come down from FEMA.
So if the lawsuit's ever settled, what'll that do to us?
Oh, that could be something totally different, but as it stands now, the requirements are for full implementation measures to be put into place about 18 months from now that we'd hear about, and these are just required ones now.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
Counselor Wilk?
Yes.
Counselor Bravo?
Yes.
Counselor Kantu?
Yes.
Counselor Krihalva?
Yes.
Counselor Cornwell?
Yes.
Thank you. So council bill 3287 has been duly passed. Move on now to council bill 3288.
I'd like to introduce council bill 3288, an ordinance amending ordinance 2433 Master Fee Schedule to modify and update community development planning division fees, public works fees, and public records fees, and repealing all fees and charges that are inconsistent with this ordinance and setting an effective date.
Thank you. Council bill 3288 has been duly introduced, and beating ordinance requires two readings. May we please have the first reading by title only if there's no objections?
Council bill number 3288, an ordinance amending ordinance 2433 Master Fee Schedule to modify and update community development planning division fees, public work fees, public records fees, and repealing all fees and charges that are inconsistent with this ordinance and setting an effective date.
Thank you. We've had our first reading of council bill 3288. May we now have our second reading again by title only if there's no objection?
Council bill number 3288, an ordinance amending ordinance 2433 Master Fee Schedule to modify and update community development planning division fees, public works fees, and public records fees, and repealing all fees and charges that are inconsistent with this ordinance and setting an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have staff report?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Mackenzie Grant, I'm your city attorney. I will provide at least a brief introduction. About once a year, we do a general comprehensive review of our master fee schedule, and as part of that, we ask departments to, you know, review the fees within, you know, within their department that affect services that are provided by the city. We don't do modifications or changes to all of our fees every year. We try to focus on areas where, you know, we're concerned about, you know, not covering the city's costs. So when things, you know, drastically increase in cost for us to provide those services to the public, we need to make sure that we recapture those costs through adjustments to our fee schedule. This year, we looked at three different parts of our fee schedule. One was for planning department fees, so I'll let our community development director, Chris Kerr, talk about those. A few for public works, which is covered by Curtis Stoltz, and then I will cover the public record request fees, since Heather is not here this evening. But the public records request fees are a little bit unique because, you know, we generally process fees either through the city recorder's office or the police department support services department, and when we have done that in the past, we've used kind of an antiquated $41 an hour fee for most requests, but the police department has kind of always had a separate fee schedule. So what we're trying to do here is just have a unified place where all of our fees for public records requests are, clarify kind of two different rates for fulfilling most of our requests. So we'll have a clerical rate and then what's called a managerial fulfillment rate. The clerical rate will be $40 an hour, and that's kind of an aggregate cost for what it would be for fulfilling most of our requests. Ones that require managerial fulfillment time, that's at that higher rate, and that would really require a little bit more, higher level of expertise and people that may be in senior analyst positions, IT or HR, probably to help fulfill those requests. That's probably about 20% of the requests that we receive, and then we don't put actual fee dollar amounts for things that would require legal review or redaction by the city attorney's office, but really, we just have a fee equivalent to the salary of the employee involved in processing that request, and the police department uses a similar metric. So that's what you will see under the public records request fee portion of the staff report and the ordinance this evening.
Any questions concerning that aspect of Master Fee Schedule? Okay. Moving on, I want to know what a weep hole is. Why we charge $300 for it?
All right. Well, a weep hole is basically when you look at the gutter or your curb line, you see the holes that are pasted on under, those are the downspouts off of a house, so those are the gutters, so they're called weep holes. That's what they're called. Yes, you do. But if you want to add another one, it's going to cost you $300. But yeah, so that's just, all we're doing on those is that we're just, like Mackenzie said, we're just trying to recover the costs of what they are today based on what all of our equipment and the personnel costs are. We also have the removal of a curb cut. Normally, in the old days, we used to, like, if someone was adding a house, we would just cut the curbs and then they would just kind of form them. Now we make them put in an approach and everything else, so it's a little bit better. So we don't allow curb cuts anymore, so that's why that one's taken out. And then the water meters, I believe, was the other one. Water meters have drastically increased in our continuing to increase in costs, so we had to do an upgrade on that as far as the cost on those. And then, of course, the larger meters, we're just doing those based on the actual cost at the time because they can be anywhere between, you know, $1,000 to $10,000 depending on the size of the meter, so...
How long's it been since you've looked at these fees?
I think it's been like 15 years, I think, or something like that, so we've...
I don't remember looking at public works fees.
No, I've been, yeah, lacking on getting these things changed, so...
Do we know how these compare to, like, neighboring cities?
Honestly, some of these we've looked at, like, on the weep holes and those type of things, but a lot of these are just based on our actual cost, so the, our average employee rate for who's doing the work, and then like with the, on the weep hole, we have to have a, it's a diamond bit blade, and it only does so many cuts, so then we figure out about how many, if we can do 20 cuts, then we figure, you know, base it on that, so, yeah, so...
Any else on public works?
If I could just...
Yeah.
Sorry. Curtis, can you tell me, does public works charge for, you know, the covers on water meters that are out by the curb?
When they're installed, yes, they are.
They charge for that?
Yes, yes, we charge for that.
And if, I see some broken ones around.
And a lot of times, I mean, those are our meters, so then unless we have someone that has like a traffic accident or something happens or they're caught or turned in... that has like a traffic accident or something happens, or they're caught or turned in, that's just a cost that we end up having to incur to have them replaced, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I had one. We're still honoring the waiving of the fees for those that have those bugs in their trees that they need on their property, if they wanted to cut one of those trees down.
Yes, yes, we still have that.
So we're still waiving those particular fees.
Yep, we still have that.
And I was just going to add to the, on the water meter point, that was kind of becoming a big problem, because water meter costs, like Curtis said, have been going up so dramatically. The technology's been improving, and so they're becoming more electronic with remote read capabilities. And we were actually, our water meter fee was quite a bit less than the actual cost of the meter itself, let alone the installation time that it would take. And you probably understand how many water meters we've been installing over the last five years or so, so that one was becoming quite a problem.
We'll probably stop installing them now that we got the price adjusted, so that's usually how things work for me, so.
Okay, moving on, community development.
Sure, just a quick summary. The changes on the, on the planning division fees is based on just across-the-board, three-point-six-percent increase, which we got from the Bureau of Labor Statistics for, and that's actually the, that's the employment cost index that they have, which we utilized, which is what we're supposed to use from the state. We're supposed to base our planning department fees, unlike some other departments, based directly on the amount of time that the individuals put into it. That's sort of across-the-board. You were asking the last time the fees changed, this is, I think, just a year old, but if you want to go before that...
Yeah, twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah, all right, that's right. And if you want to go back, I, when that change was done, it had been, I think, over fifteen years since we had done it at the city. So that was the big monster change. We had to redo the fees, bring them up. So now the change is pretty modest across the board. And the other changes that we see in kind of pieces, we did, some of it is just cleaning it up, making it easier for people to read and understand, which seems like a small thing, but it really does matter.
So lot line adjustments going down thirteen hundred dollars?
They are. And so lot line adjustments, property line adjustments, kind of the same name, those are actually pretty simple. We found that we can churn them out a lot quicker and easier. And where you see, when you're thinking about sort of where our fees are higher and lower, generally speaking, where our, where our fees are higher are for larger developments, for major subdivisions, and large, what we call design reviews and annexations. Our fees are considerably lower than most other cities, that kind of question comes up all the time. When you're talking about property line adjustments, final plats, the kind of things that tend to happen more for smaller scale, small partitions, smaller site plan reviews that we do, those fees are lower at the, at the city level. You know, there's always this question of what kind of cost recovery do you have? There is not a hundred percent cost recovery for the work that we do in the planning department. It's perfectly acceptable, there's a reason that you do that. We're funded out of the general fund, and the idea is we do more than just sort of development work, we do a lot of long-range planning work and these other kind of things, and they fit together. We try to match that up a little bit, or at least as best we can, with the kind of needs of the community and the people that utilize it. You also see some new fees in here, and these come almost directly down from these new state requirements. We have a new residential mandatory adjustment fee, that's not a thing that's ever existed before, so we had to come up with a fee for it. We basically tie it to what we consider a typical design review one application. We have middle housing land divisions, which is, again, a new sort of dictate that's come down from the state, that we're required to process these expedited middle housing lands, land subdivision. We haven't actually had one, a middle housing land division, but I expect to get a few in. And all that is, is somebody could take, and say, an existing townhome development, maybe a quadplex that they had, or a duplex, and now they could carve it up and make two separate lots out of it. That's one way that, that's the way it typically comes out. You can do it on a vacant parcel, but it's a little bit more uncommon. And the, that's something that came from the state. We don't have a process for it, we have different timelines, we have to do it more expeditiously, we have to run it through much quicker, and the criteria for it are almost nil. So the fee's a lot less, and it'll go a lot faster. That's the gist of the changes that we made in ours.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Just one comment. I will, for the record, note that there are some instances in which our fees are either being eliminated or are going down. So everybody knows that.
Good, thank you. Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Grijalva?
Oh, yes.
Counselor Cornwell?
Yes.
Counselor Bravo?
Yes.
Counselor Wilk?
Yes.
Counselor Cantu?
Yes.
Counselor Wilk?
Yes.
Shaw.
Shaw.
I'm sorry, Shaw.
So Council Bill thirty-two eighty-eight has been duly passed. Thank you. Next up, we have sale of some surplus property on Gatch Street. You want to talk about it first?
Certainly. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Before we have a motion?
Yeah, what we have for you tonight is authorization of the sale of surplus property to, to, two separate parties who will be taking equal fifty-fifty ownership stakes. The parcel is located on Gatch Street, close to Lincoln, and it's an interesting parcel because the city used to, well, the city owned a larger version of this parcel, which it divided, and sold a smaller portion to Habitat for Humanity in two thousand and six, and a Habitat build took place on that site, which is six seventy Gatch Street. That's one of the, the owner of that property is one of the prospective purchasers of this particular site. They have partnered with a neighbor of theirs who also has frontage on this subject site to purchase it jointly. They may end up, you know, I don't know if they'll maintain a joint ownership, or if they'll work out some sort of a division, so that one of the owners will take the portion that's kind of most closely aligned with their property and vice versa. It's an interesting site, because the Habitat approached the city twenty years ago with an interest in purchasing the site, at least a portion of it for the construction of a Habitat home. The site was a challenging one, because it contained substandard fill material and some adverse environmental conditions, and so the city completed an environmental site assessment, and of course, provided that information to Habitat. They were able to work through the issues with the site, which I think required some, you know, they probably had to do some enhanced foundation construction to make sure that it could support the home, just given the fact that the fill material wasn't, you know, great. It's not a great building site, it's a flag lot, so it does have access to Gatch Street, but it's primarily located behind the residence at six seventy Gatch Street, and she's had an interest in owning that property for a number of years, and then recently partnered with her neighbor to make an offer to the city, which we feel is acceptable. It's, because of its challenging conditions, it's, you know, we've, we're, we think their offer of fifty thousand dollars is really quite reasonable. Marion County Assessor's Office has a market value placed on that property of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, but they really do high-level appraisals on publicly-owned property, because it's not taxable, so they don't really dig into the details of what they think that property is really worth. And given the environmental issues that exist there and the substandard fill material, you know, we've had it looked at by realtors, and they agree that, you know, it has a diminished value. I'd also like to point out that the city council, ten years ago now, in two thousand and fifteen, declared ten, no, no, seven parcels of city-owned property as surplus, which is a requirement that paves the way for us to dispose of property that we no longer have a public interest in owning, and this is one of those parcels. Prior to that, the council has authorized the sale of four of the original seven, so this would be the fifth. So we're getting really close, actually, to realizing a longtime council goal of disposing of surplus property. We have a couple left that, you know, kind of the further we go, the more challenging they get to dispose of, but some of the more notable ones that you'll remember that we recently disposed of is three forty-seven Front Street, now the Metropolis Building, so that was a very successful sale and redevelopment. And then seventeen fifty Park Avenue, which is now Colonial Unidad, another extremely successful project. So we've taken these properties that really weren't in productive use and put them back out into the private sector, and they've been redeveloped and are in successful use now. Some of them we've sold, like the last one that you authorized in July is being sold for the construction of a couple of homes, and of course, you know, there's always a need for housing. So, so we feel like we're doing good work here. Staff recommends that council authorize this sale, and happy to take any questions. I'll point out, though, that also that we have submitted all of the documentation that we have about these properties to the prospective purchasers, including, you know, all the council action from two thousand and six, and including minutes from those meetings, and a copy of the environmental site assessment, too, so that they, you know, know everything that we know about those properties. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
I did have a question. I noticed in the minutes from the two thousand and six, that there was maybe some sort of dispute about somebody else in the city that they had potentially had maybe wanted to purchase that, and it didn't go up for public auction or notice. So these remaining two sites, and I mean, I guess the three, this one included, is there a process for a public notice? What is going to happen with the other two sites? I just, I, people might want to know, like, how does somebody come about being able to buy these surplus city-owned properties?
That's a great question, and you've kind of jogged my memory. So I remember that discussion in the two thousand and six minutes, and I think if I remember correctly, when the city was contemplating selling, dividing and selling that smaller portion with good Gatch Street frontage directly to Habitat for Humanity without going through a public notice, public bidding process, and there actually was a public notice, because the city had to hold a public hearing declaring the property surplus before they could sell it. But I think there was a resident who thought that the general public didn't really have the same opportunity to, say, bid or make an offer on the property, and there was a discussion at the, with, you know, Bob Shields, the then-city attorney, and so he advised the council that the council really is under no obligation to create a competitive process, and that you, it is at your discretion. You could do that, or it is also at your discretion to negotiate a direct sale. We did the same thing with, you know, the Park Avenue property. FHDC reached out to the city, and if I remember right, they probably were paying attention to the surplus property declaration process, and then realized that that particular site might be suitable for one of their projects. They contacted us directly, and we brought that conversation to the council, and ultimately the council decided to, you know, negotiate a sale with, with FHDC directly. So, so that was a question that a resident raised, I remember, in two thousand and six, but the council does have the discretion to negotiate a direct sale. I'd also like to point out that we frequently are contacted by individuals, usually smaller developers, who are looking for infill parcels to build on. So I field those inquiries on a pretty regular basis. So we'll have somebody come in, says, "I'm looking for a parcel to purchase, so I can build a house. Does the city have any, any property available for sale?" And so I'll go through the list of surplus property that the council's already declared. This property has come up a lot, actually. I've talked to many prospective builders who were interested in this property, and very interested. They wanted to look at it, and then, of course, the more they learn about some of the constraints, they're kind of, most of them walked away. You know, we did receive an offer a few years ago, and at the time, the council talked about it and decided that, given the fact that the resident on Gatch Street that we're talking about now was really interested in purchasing the property and was really concerned about a house being built so close to her backyard, because the only real effectively buildable portion of that lot is really close to the back of her house, the council decided to reject that offer at that time and directed staff to negotiate with that property owner to see if she was willing and able to complete the purchase. And it's been a few years, and she's now come back and has expressed the ability and the willingness to complete the purchase. So this is kind of an item that's consistent with the council's desire from a few years ago.
Well, I think that helps to know some of that backstory, like that the realtors have looked at it and agree that there's a diminished value, so that then the community doesn't think, why are we selling this to them for fifty thousand dollars if it's potentially worth a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and fifty? To know that there's, it's probably documented that this is a true market value for that particular property, and that it makes sense that these homeowners, you know, get the opportunity.
That's very true, and we, we sold another property a few years ago that's actually in a manufactured home park, kind of in the northeast quadrant of the city, that really was an adequately buildable lot. And so, you know, that one we sold for what would really be the real market value for a buildable lot. So if we have an asset that has good, strong market value, then we would definitely sell it for that. This one is just a different case, for sure. It does have a diminished value.
Also, in the minutes that Council Cantu was referring to, was back then, was the discussion on the type of fill that was used on that. Did anything ever come from that as they moved on over the years?
The site, the subject site?
On that site?
Yeah, you know, from what I read in the environmental site assessment, there were, there were barrels and drums that were buried in the soil. And in addition to that, they detected some heavy oils. So I wouldn't say that the contamination was of an extremely concerning nature, but there were some, you know, heavy oils, like diesel oils, that were found in the soil, and then substandard fill, including like fifty-five gallon drums, which, you know, don't make for good fill material.
Not really normal. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Good discussion, and I would entertain a motion to sell the surplus property located on Gatch.
I move to authorize the city administrator to enter into a purchase and sale agreement and execute all documents, excuse me, necessary to transfer the title of city-owned property located on Gatch Street, tax lot zero-five-one-W-one-eight-A-A-zero-four-four-zero-zero, to Anna Iris Russe fifty percent, and Esmeralda Rios, and Fernando Rios fifty percent, as tenants in common, by means of a statutory warranty deed.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moving to seconded to sell the property, all in favor, signify with an aye? Aye. Opposed with the same? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on, we do not have anything from the planning commission, so going on to the Assistant City Administrator's report.
Just a couple more things that I got from Jesse here recently. Some of you may have seen that the disc golf course has now opened at Legion Park, that was a rotary-funded project. I would say it's been really, really well-received. I've seen a lot of communication on social media from people that have played the course, and they think it's a really well-laid-out course, especially on a, kind of a more constrained site like that, because there's a lot of, it's a small site, there's a lot of activity, a lot of walkers through the pathway, and, and it was laid out in a way that really doesn't create conflicts. Apparently, there's an app that you can download that helps you locate disc golf facilities, and so ours has been loaded up into the system, and so people can go play and they can log their play. And so far, we've had sixty-five unique players that have played and entered their, their data into the app. It's been played a hundred and twenty-eight times, so a lot of those players have played a couple of times, and apparently, there have been almost a hundred and eighty-five-thousand steps recorded by those that played the course. So, so that's been fun and exciting, and it's nice to see a new addition to Legion Park that adds just a little bit more. That's, that's a busy park. There is really a lot going on there. I just drove by this evening, and there was some really active, organized soccer play, the parking lot was full, and it's just really great to see what's transformed in that park over the last few years.
Is that Bring Your Own Frisbee?
It is, Bring Your Own Frisbee. Although I have read from some of the social media posts that some of the people that really were spearheading this and trying to get the word out have indicated that they're leaving some of their, their discs behind for people that are new that want to come and learn how to play the game. So, yeah, there's kind of a lot of community that's developing around that activity.
Very nice.
Yeah, yep. Probably are aware, the Aquatic Center's closed now. The Sunday before Labor Day was its last day. The weekend before, they held the Waves of Change event, kind of celebrating the thirty-year history of the Aquatic Center. We opened in October of nineteen ninety-five, so we are, we are just approaching the thirty-year anniversary, which is actually a great time for a refresh of the facility. So, so the building is closed now. There's going to be quite a bit of work behind the scenes. There's going to be quite a bit of work behind the scenes inside the building that people aren't going to see, and so I want to make a point of calling that out because people may wonder like, well, the pool's closed, why isn't all this heavy construction going on? Because a lot of the building is being retained and we're doing a lot of work to the existing, mostly the pool and auditorium and the pool equipment, the contractors are having to do selective demo to get inside the walls of the building to figure out what the condition of the structure is, so that we really know what level of work is going to be required when heavy construction begins. So there's going to be a lot of that, kind of smaller and harder to see work that's going to be going on over the next few months. Heavy construction will start right after the first of the year, and that's when you're going to start seeing the demolition of the, the front end of the building. So the existing locker rooms, office area and lobby, those are all going to come down, and then the, kind of the new community center is going to be built around it and a whole bunch of really nice improvements to the, the pool itself. Looking at about probably a year and a half construction timeframe, so it's going to be, you know, it's going to be a while, it's going to be difficult for people, and because of that, we've reached out to some of our neighboring aquatic facilities to just figure out what kind of programming they have going on, get that information to our users. And in one instance, we've located a deep-water fitness class that's going to be operating at the Malala Aquatic Center. It's a little bit later in the evening, and for a lot of the participants, they're concerned about driving there and home in the dark, and so we've made arrangements to provide transportation to the class, which takes place a couple of days a week. And fortunately, the Malala Pool will accept some of the Medicare Advantage programs like Silver Sneakers and Silver and Fit, and most of those participants qualify for that, so a lot of them will be able to participate for no cost, kind of like they do here, because we're able to bill Medicare and Malala is able to bill Medicare for their participation in that class. We couldn't do it with every class, but that was one class where we did find a good option, and we were happy to do that.
Thank you for that. Some of the yoga classes are being held in the library?
I heard that there are some dry land classes like yoga that are going to be conducted there, yeah. I don't have the details on that, I don't think. I don't know, Jesse gave me that. Actually, it looks like a lot. I should have read this a little more closely, but we've got a gentle yoga class in the mornings three days a week, resistance training three days a week, circle mobility two days a week, Pilates, Zumba, and all-level yoga. So we actually do have a lot of dry land fitness going on at the library that I didn't realize, so trying to fill the gap a little bit.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's good to, good to reach out. I know it's affecting a lot of citizens, that pool is pretty well-used, so. Is that all you got?
That's all I have.
Good report, thank you. Moving on to council reports, Counselor Cornwell?
Back in school.
Right.
Yep.
Drive safe.
Yep.
Okay. Counselor Bravo?
Just thought we started meeting with the park renaming committee. Was it last week, Friday? Counselor Cornwell and I are part of that. Good start to the meeting. Yeah, looking to rename some of the parks to celebrate Woodburn's diversity history. So excited about some of the possibilities and some of the changes to the names, looking forward to wrapping that up.
Good mention. Counselor Shab?
No, I have nothing to report.
Counselor Wilk?
Let me, let me just say in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month, I'm very proud that we live in the largest Latinx community in the state, and I just am especially proud of all the contributions that our Latinx community members make to our community, really positive contributions.
Before we move on, I need to make a clarification. I was wrong, the Mexican consulate, the event going on at the plaza is Friday at four o'clock, not Saturday.
Five.
Five to eight. Be there at four and say hi, okay? You can't get there too early. It's going to be a big crowd, okay? You want to get, you want to get your seat at four o'clock.
Brenda, it's Friday, also the second Friday, thanks?
Yes.
Yes, it'll be first, no, Friday on first and second, so it's together.
So there's local artists, Brenda Bravo showing at the museum, not our Brenda Bravo, but our artist Brenda Bravo. So, yeah, looking forward to that. Counselor Cantu, welcome back, good to see you.
Thank you, it's nice to be back. I have nothing to report, I don't think.
Okay.
You're looking at me like I should.
Counselor Grujalba?
I'm, nothing to report as well.
And I have nothing to add, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moves.
Move, second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Out of here. Thank you.
Yeah. I saw that the one that I missed, like, really, I missed the next one.